Okay, between now and six o'clock we'll have our first open forum or until the open forum is completed. Madam Clark, do we have any cards? Mr. Charles Baer. Welcome.
Thank you, President Hall, council members, and my fellow citizens that are behind me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I will join you all, as are some of you, as a colleague in a few months, and I appreciate the time and the sacrifices you make to serve. I appear before you tonight to discuss the Complete Streets study that was recently done to reopen East Government Street to Ninth Avenue. I watched you all engage in more than a two-hour debate without a motion earlier this week, and I expected, as did many others, that the council would take some action. But you pushed it down the road another month. I couldn't talk to most of you about this because I feared it'll still be an issue when I get elected, when I am actually sworn into office, and that would violate the Sunshine Law, so I did not try to reach out to any of you. This issue surfaced several months ago, and the city recently spent about $18,000 to study this issue under a bigger title of restoring the grid and complete streets. West Florida Regional Planning Council employee Alan Gray was charged with homing a series of public meetings to discuss this issue. The meetings were advertised and flyers were distributed, more than 300 of them, to businesses and residences across that part of the city. Over the course of four workshops, Mr. Gray heard from citizens and established a task force, task forces actually, three of them, to take a deeper look at certain issues. Each of these task forces created a report which they thought was going to be included in Gray's final report. They were not included, but you have them, I think they're coming to you on the desk, and you'll be on your desk in front of you, along with portions of Mr. Gray's report. If, when you get it, you look at page 18 of Gray's report, you will see option three is to reopen East Government Street. However, if you look at page one, the first page of a two-page task force report, the citizens voted overwhelmingly 50 to 3 against this, against reopening East Government Street. For those who support reopening East Government Street, this is not good news. However, when you ask citizens for their opinion, and they give it to you, then you just can't shelve it in favor of the mayor's decision. None of the options presented in either Gray's report or the task force reports include one to send it back to the mayor, although that was discussed the other night. And some of you have even discussed the issue of doing a follow-up survey, which is mentioned on page 19 in Mr. Gray's report, and this was never discussed in any of the four workshop meetings, and would be a waste of money. The citizens' message on this issue has been loud and clear. It's time for the council to act. I encourage you to present a motion in either old or new business tonight to accept this report and support option one, which directs the city to do nothing and to leave East Government Street as it is, not to reopen it to Ninth Avenue or to Bayfront Parkway. There's been no clear and convincing evidence that opening East Government Street is going to do, make a major impact on downtown or the historic district, and we need to focus our energy and our very, very limited dollars on pedestrian improvements in the historic district and on those needs identified by the citizens and the voters of this city. I thank you for your time, and God bless you all and this city.
Okay, thank you. Please don't leave yet. Ms. Myers?
Yes. Hi. Mr. Baer, I want to thank you for coming down here and voicing your concerns regarding this issue, and I wholeheartedly agree with everything you've said. And I am going to bring this up under old business because we need to get back to where we first started, and that is, the mayor's recommendation that came before the committee of the whole was to open Government Street. That should be the only issue we were considering, and it doesn't need to go back to the mayor. So I will be making a motion that addresses the issue that should have been the only issue that we were considering, and the issue before us was whether or not to open Government Street or not. So I intend to bring it up under unfinished business, and I want to thank you for bringing it up to this council. Thank you.
Ms. Dewise.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Baer, for bringing this up. You have a meticulous understanding of this issue, and I had a conversation today because I was quite frustrated that, you know, we were listening for two hours and not taking action. It really was to the point of ridiculous. But I was talking with someone that actually supports opening it up today, and I said, you know, there can be an argument made for both sides of this, but my point was that the conversation began very poorly with it just being, taking action and not having that conversation with the stakeholders. So it's been a long process, and like you said, the citizens have spoken up, and, you know, I wish it had gone better, but we have a residential area that has certain needs, we have a business area that has certain needs, so I look forward to talking about this later on, too, but thank you for bringing it up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baer. Any more cards? Oh, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Baer. I appreciate certainly your representation of the process. I'm the first to admit that the introduction of the opening of Ninth and Government Street to the public, most particularly to that neighborhood, achieved low grades, a low grade, no doubt at all. What I am seeking is fellow council members' support later on this evening in trying to disengage themselves from the flaws that accompany or characterize that introduction. I today, and I think fellow council members received correspondence from some other members in the community asking for us to, some were so bold as to say we want it open. Others, I think, simply sought our patience and requested that we more formally engage UWF in this discussion to at least determine what they may expect or envision in the future regarding this particular issue. But I do appreciate the way that you're handling this, and hopefully we will, most importantly, respond to all of those affected citizens. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there any unfinished business? Ms. Myers.
Yes, I want to bring up the Government Street issue that Mr. Baer brought up earlier. And I really think that there needs to be, this issue needs to be addressed tonight so that people are not just left in limbo. So I would like to make a motion to take no action as to vehicular traffic on Government Street.
Second? There's a motion and second discussion. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope that Councilwoman Myers would narrow her comments because I think that there were interests in the community about bike lanes, those might be vehicles. If you would make it more specific about East Government Street, I would feel more comfortable supporting it. Thank you. Opening tonight.
Ms. Myers.
I feel that the motion is very narrow. It only addresses vehicular traffic. That leaves open further improvements to Government Street, and I think it should be improved. I think there are a lot of areas that need to be discussed in terms of improving Government Street, and I just, I didn't want to address bike lanes or sidewalk reconstruction or anything other than just what is, concerns the community most right now. And the issue that was originally before us was vehicular traffic, but it certainly doesn't preclude any other improvements. That's why I made the motion this narrow, because I just wanted it to be focused on vehicular traffic and not anything else.
Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. I do not support Councilwoman Myers' motion, and I completely understand why it is, has been stated as narrowly as it has been, from a strategic and technical standpoint, and respect what her goal is, but I don't support it. And I just, I guess my convictions are as strong about wanting to further explore this as perhaps other council members have shown that they have perhaps a particular focus and interest in vetting an issue to the end. And I don't mean to do this at all to the expense of citizens. I don't want them to be fatigued, which is certainly what I recognize as some rationale that is being offered by council members as to why they want to bring this level of conclusion in the form of supporting this motion.
We need some order in the back of the room, please.
However, Mr. President, I just, I have received enough communication from other members that I respect, including Mr. Matt Altier, who is heading up a very much an interesting endeavor and committee regarding the cultural tourism. He has assured me he is meeting with President Judy Benz. They recognize they have not offered their opinion. There is no, as I understand, the funding's not here for any sort of opening of the street of the level of, or the integrity that design that I would support, and I want to make that perfectly clear. But I do hope that I can at least gain enough support to allow us to hear from some other organizations. And finally, this is probably the most volatile part of my commentary, but I think we're dealing with very much a perspective about what is, what is a broken street, or if it's not broken, why are we trying to fix it? And the measurement of a broken street perhaps is what's different here. I don't measure a broken street as one that has traffic on it. I measure a broken sidewalk as one where cars are driving on a sidewalk, where motor vehicles and users are in fact exhibiting transgressions in the form of putting vehicles on designated pedestrian pathways. So my, what I'm trying to say is, increasing for traffic by double, if traffic is four and doubling it is eight, that does not mean that we have provided or created irreparable damage to in fact a street. So I have admittedly a much broader interpretation of what is a working, safe street. And if I was someone that lived at the end of East Government that saw as the infrequent use of a street by vehicles, I'd be right up here behind the microphone, standing behind that podium, asking my council to not allow more cars to be on my street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dewise.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to again speak in support of Ms. Myers' motion, and I also want to say how much respect I have for Councilman Spencer and your comments tonight, and I'm not making it personal, and obviously it's not negative, so you might enjoy my comments, but that this process was so flawed, and for you to understand and see the will of the citizens that has come forward. We've all talked about if this could have been presented differently, of beautification and four-way stops and bike lanes and trees and underground utilities and opening it up and looking at traffic studies, and start with that conversation instead of what it was presented as to the residents. It just was shameful to be told that's what's going to happen and we're putting it out to bid, so, you know, I'm glad the citizens have had a chance to speak up, and that's the beauty of representative government, you know, now in your district, maybe hat in hand because of how this process has gone, but you can reconnect with the folks in that district and have a conversation about what everyone wants. And I just, I have a great deal of respect for you for this process that you're trying to create. Thank you.
Mr. Spencer.
I'm limited to two, and so I want to use my second chance to comment. And thank you, Councilwoman Dewise, because I am the first to admit that introduction of this connectivity was absolutely flawed, and certainly I have to sort of smile and laugh at the use of your word, "I can reconnect with these residents."
Unintended metaphor.
And I certainly plan to if they will allow me to. And ironically, more than probably nine months ago, when they can check with Gulf Power, I didn't contact any of these individuals, but I was out there with some, I would say heavy hitters in Gulf Power. I asked them to meet me, and I began what I thought would be a very informative forum and study on their part where I walked them down Government Street and particularly pointing to, specifically pointing to what I felt was aging overhead utilities, infrastructure, and so many unsightly utility services and other areas on East Government that I felt needed so much attention, particularly the lack of tree canopies and sidewalks. So we're more aligned than probably how it appears when it is reported or viewed from afar, and I do look forward to helping them if they will accept my participation in making a much better neighborhood and East Government Street corridor. Thank you.
Ms. Myers.
Yes, I just wanted to point out again that all this motion does is, just says that the council is not going to take any action on vehicular traffic on Government Street. We're not going to take any action. That's what the motion says. Now, I share Mr. Spencer's passion for improving Government Street. I have, I have brought this street up to city council long before I was on city council. I really want to see it become a beautiful area down there. It's inexcusable to have that street in the condition, the sidewalks in the condition. It's, it's appalling, and I believe that if somebody, and the city has been threatened with a lawsuit over the condition of Government Street. And I really want us to address that street, make it a top priority for beautification and all the things that you've suggested, Mr. Spencer. And this, this motion certainly doesn't preclude us working toward that. And also, I think it's really important that UWF have some inputs. So I see a great future for that area down there and a lot of stakeholders involved, but this motion doesn't preclude all of the stakeholders getting together and working toward a common vision to improve that, that area there, down there. So anyway, I hope council will support the motion.
Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'll make it quick again. I'm not going to support the motion, respectfully not support the motion. I'd like this conversation to continue. Again, Councilwoman Myers is right, I'd like to get some input from UWF. I think they own 20-something pieces of property in the area. I'd like to get Gulf Power possibly involved in that with all, some of the residents that I've talked to about, I must say, the majority of them do not want connectivity to Ninth Avenue, but there are some that do. And there are some that want improvements to that street that I think are necessary. I remember a couple of years ago, maybe a little bit longer, there was an issue with a tree in the middle of a sidewalk, and some neighbors got, contacted me about that, but, and the tree remains there today. So I know there's some issues there with sidewalks and other issues. So I'd like to lead the conversation open. I'd also like to hear the mayor and from the mayor himself and what he would like done with that street. I think there was a recommendation a while back, and there's been several different plans talked about, but I'd like to hear more, and I'm just not ready to close the conversation at this time, so I will not be voting for the motion, but that is very respectfully done, Ms. Councilwoman Myers. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I don't think that this motion will close the discussions, and I believe that's been stated several times, but there comes a time, and as Mr. Johnson has indicated, there are some people in favor and some who are not. I believe that this motion will give everybody an opportunity to step back, take another look. There is a solution, it just hasn't been discovered yet. I, like the rest of you, probably have received mounds of documentation and opinions and et cetera, et cetera, but I believe that this motion will give us all a chance to step back for a second, take a look at what the objectives are, what the options are, and then move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Charles Baer has indicated he wants to speak, but before we do that, I wanted to ask Ms. Myers how she sees this motion proceeding. Let's just say that Mr. Altier, after we get some restore money in here, and UWF gets a big portion of that, and he's able to help realize that grand plan that he wanted for downtown Pensacola and if Government Street became part of that. I don't recall if it was or not, or how far over it went. Would your motion tonight preclude that from happening?
No, absolutely not.
Even if that included opening up Government Street?
I think that can be brought back, but we're taking it off the table for right now with this motion.
Okay. All right. Well, actually, the way that you'd have to do it is somebody vote to reconsider, and if it was voted down, regardless of how the vote was done, couldn't reconsider for another year after that, so. Okay. Mr. Baer.
Thank you, President Hall and council members, for letting me speak again. I just wanted to point out one thing about UWF. I have met with Matt Altier, and I can tell you that the type of tourist that he is seeking is not one that drives into town. Typical cultural tourist flies into town and gets transportation to downtown through a taxi, through, you know, whatever means they might do, a shuttle. And then the whole idea of having ferries between the different areas, the ferry out of Fort Pickens, ferry to the beach, ferry over to the Naval Aviation Museum, is for that particular type of tourist because they don't like to drive in. They typically spend more money than your average tourist that say would go to the beach. And so it's not necessarily, if you're waiting for them to weigh in on this, I don't think the type of tourist that he's trying to attract really needs Government Street to be open. What they need is a good walkable street, walkable streets throughout, and I'm not sure how far over it went either. I think the main corridor he was looking at was, you know, around Palafox and then down next to the P&amp;J Building and somewhere in there. And I don't think that this particular road, opening it or, you know, would really play into the type of tourist they're trying to attract. And one other thing I wanted to mention was that in the contract that was let with West Florida Regional Planning Council, there was a $4,000 fee for the contract consultant. That was to bring in, I believe, Mr. Burden. And it appears to me that this whole study was done to justify reopening Government Street, and that even though you call it, you know, reopening or the grid and complete streets, there's just a real push here. We spent $18,000, and now we didn't get the result we wanted because someone wanted this result to be that we need to reopen East Government Street, and so we haven't gotten that, so we're going to continue this, and I think it's time to listen to the citizens, and you've got a fairly clear mandate from the citizens. They had plenty of opportunities. Even these people that have contacted Councilman Spencer, they should have come to one of the four forums or the public hearings and made their voice be known. And I think at this point, you know, you need to look at who has weighed in on this and make your decision. I respect your decision. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Actually, this is your third time, so I will need to...
Well, a waiver of rules, okay, I'll be quiet, and perhaps we'll be out of here by eight.
If there's no objection, Mr. Gerald should have an opportunity to speak the third time.
Thank you. One of the things that came to mind as I'm listening to us discuss this issue is that I lived in the city of New York for 15 years, and many of you are old enough to remember the dead-end kids, the dead-end streets that were along the East River, and I'm wondering if we can all take a trip up to New York and look at what happened to those dead, what the city has done with those dead-end streets. Because government in its present condition runs into a dead end, but there are creative ways that you can develop a dead-end street that will fit in with the aesthetics of the city itself. Can you guys approve a trip to New York so we can go take a look at the dead-end streets and the changes that have been made and how they look, you know, positive? Because I think our thinking may be limited to more of a personal option and a plan. But if we had a trip, we could go up and take a look and see that all of those dead-end streets along the East River have been creatively reconstructed to fit in with the aesthetics of the city of New York. Will you get a motion to approve a trip?
As long as we can do it during the U.S. Open.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to say anything on this issue, but I don't know how many of you recall when Government Street was open. I don't know whether any of you remember it. Okay. I really didn't see anything wrong with it. In my opinion, it was a thoroughfare that was needed. And in my opinion, it is possibly a thoroughfare that might be, need to be brought back. I haven't heard any real compelling reasons as to why we should not open it back up. A lot of citizens would like to have, they own a little private sanctuary down there, but I'd like to have some private sanctuary somewhere other parts of the city. But I'm in favor of having full dialogue. It can be made beautiful with white pear, all the other things with the street. But to close it off, I just have some real concerns about that. Thank you.
Ms. Dewise.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I really did not want to speak twice, but I respect everyone's position here tonight. I just urge council to consider the spirit in which Ms. Myers has respectfully made this motion, and we all know that this conversation is going to continue, that UWF has some opportunities. What we're trying to accomplish here and in the spirit of that, a unanimous vote to end this broken and very frustrating conversation that exists, and because of how it was started and how it was crammed down the citizens' throat and how they were put through the four workshops, and the outcome is absolutely no, a majority says no. So what we're doing is symbolically, with Ms. Myers' motion, ending that conversation. It can be brought back up. It can be forged in a new way. I mean, I hate to make a metaphor of it, but it's as if there's a broken arm that needs to be set and put in a cast and healed. I think this went terribly poorly, and in the spirit of what she's trying to accomplish, unanimously supporting that tonight sends that message that we respect representative government, and we hear you, citizens. We have heard the will of the people, that they do not want this at this time, and that's what is being accomplished here tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to respond briefly to Councilman Townsend's comments. I have 87,000 reasons not to reopen Government Street. That's how much that original proposal was going to cost, and I think we, as a city, can find better uses of the taxpayer dollars than to do something that the majority of citizens that we've heard from said that they don't want us to do. There could be compelling reasons to do it, I just haven't seen them, and if I, in absence of a compelling reason, I don't need to spend that kind of money on a project where there are a lot of other projects that I think, you know, I've heard from citizens, I'd like to have this, I'd like to have that, and we could spend that money elsewhere for things that neighborhoods want. And I'm not precluding it coming back. If there's a great plan that really works, it could work, but at this point, I will support the motion. I do think that the motion is a little broad. Everybody says it's narrow, but Government Street is 20, 30 blocks long, and so I think there's an opportunity for other things to come up, but... for, for other things to come up, but I appreciate the spirit of the motion and I will support it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking out for you here, Mr. Spencer. I'm going to call on Ms. Dubusson to speak first, just in case you want to address some of her remarks.
I don't know why you would think he would want to respond after I speak, Mr. Hall. Council and especially you, Mr. Hall, I rise this evening because I unfortunately was unable to attend the complete street, I mean, excuse me, the opening the grid meetings because they were scheduled at the same time that city council meetings were scheduled, which left some people with an inability to give input. But since I don't live in that neighborhood, it's not nearly as impactful. However, there are some questions that I believe went unanswered that in the future would give plenty of reason for council to look at it again. But in, in this moment, I would encourage you to consider Ms. Myers' proposal because the value of homes is directly impacted by the climate of confidence that a neighborhood has to present to the public. We've been spending many, many weeks and days working on the urban renewal, trying to figure out how we create a climate of confidence in all of our neighborhoods that are emerging. That neighborhood is not one that is in danger. People believe in the value of their homes there. Many people have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, those who are capable, and there are also others who have simple homes who have done the work that they need to, to preserve their homes in that area. And when you change a cul-de-sac type street, you directly negatively impact the houses on that street so that you are directly negatively impacting your tax rule. So while we're trying to change rules on one side of the city to raise the tax rolls, we're going to change rules on the other side of the city to lower the tax rolls. And if you really want to do what the people want, you get a consensus, which is what that series of charrettes and follow-up meetings and everything, you know, gave you, a consensus of all interested parties, all of whom were duly publicly notified of the opportunity to participate. I took the time to call Mr. Altier for the first meeting because I felt it was very important that UWF weigh in early on because he had laid out a program of walkability and heritage tourism. I spoke with Carter Kena who had done a model layout of what UWF could do and what other things could be done in that area. Both of them at that point indicated that they could make it work either way. Mr. Kena even said that, you know, he had purposely left the Ninth Avenue out of his little model because it was, anything that happens, we just adjust everything inside. So what, what Ms. Myers is proposing tonight would give those homeowners who are concerned that they have to watch every single meeting of this city for the next six, eight, 10 months until suddenly it's back up as a, a hot item. If you put it to rest, then it would have to come up, initiate it again, and you would have a process that the, the citizens could connect with. So I would encourage you to look at the process that you are reversing if you don't settle this issue. You are just prolonging something that you've gone through over and over and over now because this is actually the second time that this topic has come before this body. The first time, when it didn't get approved, it was sent to this whole consensus building process. So please look at what you're doing to the individuals and the properties there and attached. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sanding.
Gary Sanding, 1517 East Jackson. Thank you. You know, that's part of Hockshaw. I don't know if anyone up there even knows what I'm talking about, but I probably walked up and down Ninth Avenue, all in that neighborhood, more than any of you. And luckily, there's a lot of historic buildings down there. Now, I can see certain people want to get in there, develop it. At times, I've even thought about moving back down in that area, but I'm happy where I'm at, but I'd love it down there. It, it's, it's a wonderful neighborhood. I've even, I miss Smichels, that French restaurant. I'd go out of my way to go back there and visit it. Again, if citizens in the neighborhood, I'm not for gated communities, and this ain't a gated community, I swing in there all the time. And yes, you can keep it closed, you can make it pedestrian-friendly, you can put in bike paths, you can do all kinds of things, but if the citizens of that neighborhood wish you to keep it closed, can you possibly, I mean, I'm sure most of, well, I don't know. At one time I thought about it and I'm thinking, "Oh, my God, UWF, they got a monopoly on there. They can almost assert their power and get practically anything they want." Now you got citizens that's just angry as hell and they ain't going to take it anymore. And this is an issue where you can say, "Hey, citizens have a right." Let me interject some. I'm a little upset. Now, I'm a little out of line. I've got a few minutes to explain why I'm a little upset. I came down here, I was late, but I was listening to it as I was running around the house. I heard about dolphins. Larry, I heard this, you know? I heard some other good things. And I come down here, trying to get into a parking spot, the old military term, you know, give it a quick, a quick visual, hell, they in the damn parking place around the city hall. You try and dive into handicap, you can't even get in. So why am I upset? That's why, many things.
Yeah, save that for open forum.
I just wanted to get that off my chest, I'll go have a cigarette.
All right. Okay, sir. Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, and I recognize that.
Close handicap pocket.
Thanks, sir.
All right, I recognize that you're granting me a.
Yes, if there's no objection from council, we'll give you the third time to speak.
Okay, thanks. First of all, I think that Ms. Dottie Dubusson is a, very much a, an important asset and a voice for our community, and not only that, she consistently reminds me that I, I need to hone my debating skills. And I, I, I appreciate the fact that the terms and the justifications often for her opinions are, certainly provide for me a, helps expand my understanding of a wider spectrum of, of where others may be coming from, and I, I mean that sincerely. I'm not the best debater, by the way, in my household. Also, I want to, this is the most important point I want to make, and I, I want to reframe that perhaps Councilwoman Dewise, using that metaphor of a broken arm that needs to be set and put in a cast, I appreciate that. What I don't want to be cast as by not supporting the motion as, and therefore not being part of a unanimous vote, as someone that is not pledging tonight to maintain a very much an open mind and, and want to be part of, a leader in the dialogue of continuing to address East Government Street. And I, I just want to make that point. If, if I'm not on the prevailing or unanimous side, it in no way means that I am committed to pushing the plan as was presented of reconnecting East Government Street. I do not support that plan at all. And then finally, we're, I, I think that the money that was spent, Mr. Baer was questioning that, you know, we've spent a lot of money on studies. I'll tell you, this particular study united galvanized, like-minded individuals that showed an immense amount of care and concern about their neighborhood, and I just don't think that's going to die. I think, I think that's been fueled and it will, it will continue. So I just want to say finally, what I saw, yes, there is an area, an end of a street where people are certainly enjoying the, the quiet aspect of a, an almost carless or a low, low vehicle count street. And what I saw is, and I just, I can't resist, I guess, is when I see a renovation project, I want to get engaged, and in my mind, that was a renovation project waiting to be repaired. And that's, that's all I have to say.
I'll just be very brief in my remarks. Over the last six years, there's a number of different things we've done in the city, specifically the downtown urban core, implementing with different urban planners, experts in their, their field have come in to tell us that was wrong with how our downtown was, whether it be one-way streets, you know, with the corresponding signs that says, "Do not enter," you know, "wrong way," you know, the psychological barriers that, that created. And, and every one of them that we've addressed, the three councils I've been part of have, have adopted those, and under different forms of government too. Managerial form of government and mayoral form of government, or mayor-council form of government. And one of the things that I heard repeatedly is one of the worst things that we did ever was back there at, at the government street. I sympathize with, with the citizens, but I, I just question that, you know, we, we've taken these experts' advice on everything else, and why are we, you know, closing the door on this one? I, I'm not the best vote counter in the world, but I know this is going to, to, to go the opposite way, that I'm going to vote most likely, and I, I could be devious and vote with what I presume the majority is going to be so that I could bring it up to be reconsidered at a, at a, at a later date. But I'm not going to do that. I, but I just do want to point out that the urban planners, not just one, but several, have said this is essential to revitalizing that historic area. Please vote. Okay. One, two, three, four. Okay, that fails on a four to four vote.